Welcome to the July 21st, 2015 School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Public Access Cable. The school committee would like to thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Public Access Cable Stations Channels 5, 19, and 20 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at 413-203-1360. Superintendent Fallinsby, do you have some announcements for us?
I have just two brief announcements. The next school committee meetings are August 11th, September 8th, and 22nd. Meetings will begin at 6:30 PM. The first day of school for students is Monday, August 31st, 2015.
Thank you very much. Do we have some correspondence? We do. There was a family from Maple School who was writing to convey their child's positive experience with the reading recovery program at Maple School, which is run by Kathy Barube. Correct me if I'm wrong. Do you want to speak to it any further, Niece? It was really nice.
Katie, Katie Barube. Yes, Reading Recovery is an early intervention program for first grade students. It's a program we've had in our schools since the early 90s. And it's proven to be very successful. There's, you know, longitudinal studies that show that reading recovery is a successful intervention for first grade students who are at risk of having difficulty learning to read. And so, it is a one-on-one program for 20 weeks, I think it is about. And what usually happens is at the end of the program, the students don't even remember that they've had a reading instruction. So, you know, a few years from then, they don't remember their teacher, they don't remember they had this, but they are reading at the gray level of their peers. So, it's a great program. We're very proud of it. You know, it is my intention to always try to find ways to fund this program because I've seen firsthand the tremendous success for students, and this is a testimony to that success.
I guess we should read the letter. Other schools have cut this program, so it's so wonderful that we have it.
I think so, too.
And it's lucky that we have Katie, too. She's great.
Katie's an excellent teacher, so dedicated to the work she does.
I said Kathy.
Yeah, you did.
I meant Katie.
Katie.
And I know her, so that's doubling there. So, the chairwoman requested we read the whole letter, which is really lovely. "To whom it may concern, we are writing to convey our child's very positive experience with the reading recovery program at Maple School. Our child entered first grade in fall 2014 with a low reading evaluation. He did not enjoy reading, struggled learning new vocabulary, and had very little confidence in his capabilities. He did not progress with his peers and in time was identified as a candidate for reading recovery. Early in 2015, he began the reading recovery program with Catherine Barube. She worked with him for three months, and in that time, he made dramatic improvements. Not only did his skill as a reader improve, he finished the program at a great appropriate reading level, but his confidence as a reader skyrocketed. He will now read aloud to us. He enjoys the stories that he reads, and he takes the initiative to read things in his environment, signs, announcements, instructions. He is a different reader after participating in the reading recovery program. We feel confident that he is prepared for the second grade. We are grateful that the East Hampton Schools have this early intervention program, and we are grateful for Catherine Barube. We feel that the skills he has gained over the last few months will support his continued academic growth. With appreciation, Kurt and Rebecca Zelen." Very nice. Thank you. Okay.
Could I make a request? It's probably not necessary, but just as a, I think, an important gesture that a copy of the letter go in Katie's personal file?
Certainly. Next on the agenda, gifts. We have some gifts?
Yes. "Motion to accept with gratitude and appreciation following gifts for Mr. Paul Rilla of Northeast Center for Youth and Families and Mr. Ron Lewandowski of East Hampton Basketball Association for the donation of two complete basketball hoop systems and orchestrating and installing the systems valued at approximately $8,000."
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I just want to say what a tremendous gift this is to our middle school. Really, just so generous, and we are so very grateful for this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. At this time, we invite anyone who's in our audience to come and speak with us. If they have something, information they want to share with us, it's public speak time, but it doesn't look as though we have anyone here to do that this evening. So, I'm assuming we'll just move on at this point to the next item on our agenda, which was going to be Mike Burley, who was the Chair of the School Building Committee for East Hampton High School. And he had wanted to come and, as he officially resigned from the Chair position to the school committee. He said, "This is where he started," so he felt it would be appropriate to come here as his last stop to officially resign his position as the school building committee has now dissolved and the project's considered complete. So, he's unable to come as planned, so he asked me if I would read this to you all on his behalf. So, Mike says, "When I came before you some years ago, about 2001, 2002, I believe, and accepted the position of East Hampton High School Building Committee Chair, little did I know we would finally commission the high school in 2013. All of you should be quite proud of your efforts to get this done, no matter how long it took, especially the building committee members, civic groups such as the Committee for Better Schools, City Council, and the voters of East Hampton for having the foresight to see the need. I am most proud, however, of the finished product. As the superintendent mentioned during our last committee meeting on June 29th, we went from a Class III facility to a Class I facility in just two short years. Of course, credit the building, but not without also mentioning our fine teachers, staff, and very hard-working East Hampton High School students. Therefore, I hereby resign as Chairman of the East Hampton High School Building Committee. Warm regards, Michael Burley, Senior." And Mike, we would just like to thank you for your many, many years of service and your dedication to making the new East Hampton High School a reality for our city. We are truly grateful for your leadership. Just want you to know that. Thank you. Many thanks to him.
Many, many thanks. He's been with us through thick and thin, and it is in large part because of the work that Mike Burley did that we have this wonderful new high school. So, thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Finance Subcommittee Report.
Nothing reported this time.
Okay, the Policy Subcommittee?
So, the minutes from our June 9th meeting are there. And we also have our second reading of some policies. So, you had the first reading in the last meeting. So, if I may, if you have any questions, I guess you can ask as we go along. So, I would like to make a motion to approve Policy JG, which is updated to JIC Student Discipline.
Second. All those in favor? Our discussion, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion for Policy JH. It's an updated student absences policy.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve Policy JFC, which is updated to JK Student Conduct.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve Policy JFH, which is updated to JII Student Complaints and Grievances.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And our last one, I make a motion to update Policy BHD, which is the School Committee Member Compensation and Expenses.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very, thank you.
On that last one, I just wanted to note that the new policy says that we would receive compensation in June, and that didn't happen yet. I think all the payroll is right here. So, I just wanted to mention.
Okay, Deli.
Okay, all right, we're good. I just thought I'd throw that out there. Okay. Okay, CES update.
We do have an update. I mean, we met, we can have two weeks ago, and I neglected to forward on the Director's Report, and Bill Deal did his Director's Report a little bit differently this go-around, and that is, he just copied off some snippets from, if you go on the Collaborative's webpage, they've got a, they're kind of doing a new thing with their webpage, and that it's a little bit of a blog kind of news post, and there's some interesting pieces on their various programs. And our district participates in a lot of those programs. So, it's a nice, I encourage everybody here and at home to check out the website for the Collaborative CES. And just kind of take three minutes on the website to look at the various programs that are out there that are available, and you get a nice snapshot of what's going on and the various kinds of kids and youth in our area that are participating in programs, so...
Do you happen to know that, like, what the web address is?
I should. I don't know it, but if you Google Collaborative Educational Services, it'll come up. It's pretty slick. They're doing a really good job.
Great. Very good. Okay, moving on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Deb. So, I am very pleased this evening to introduce some new hires in our district. We've hired a number of administrators. We have been sorry, sad to see some of our administrators move on to other districts. We're happy for them and their new opportunities, but we are also very excited to have our new administrators in place. So, I've invited them here this evening so that I can introduce them to you and give them an opportunity to say a few words about themselves and, you know, their feelings about being in their new positions. So, we'll start with Dale Doran. She's our new Interim Director of Business Services. And Dale, if you would come to the podium, you can introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Happy to be here this evening and to meet you all. I assumed my responsibilities with the beginning of the year, so I'm very new to my position, but it's been a wonderful start. Everybody's been very welcoming and helpful. I thought it might be helpful if I told you a little bit about my background. I, most recently, was a Superintendent of Schools in the Pioneer Valley Regional School District for the last seven years. And previous to that, I was the Assistant Superintendent in the same district, doing many of the responsibilities that are contained within this position. I concurrently with being Assistant Superintendent, I did a couple of interim principalships as well, one at one of the elementary schools in the district and one at the high school. And previous to that, I worked for the first 12 years in education as a teacher and administrator in a private school for special education. So, I've got quite a broad background. I had a wonderful 22, almost 22 years in the Pioneer District. Very professionally rewarding, very personally rich. But 22 years is a long time, and I felt like I was ready for a different context. And the other thing that interested me about returning to a role like this is it being a more contained leadership role, a more focused leadership role, rather than the broadness of a superintendency. So, I'm hopeful that I can be very helpful to Nancy and to the committee, and I'm really looking forward to digging in and getting going. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Great to meet you.
And we'll be seeing more of Dale, I'm sure. And I did know Dale, as we were Superintendent colleagues for a number of years, so I think it's going to be a great partnership, and she brings just a wealth of expertise to our district. And so, we're looking forward to working together and meeting our goals. Thank you, Dale. Sarah Mochek, our Interim Director of Special Education, was supposed to be here this evening. Her predecessor, Ann Knapp, resigned to take a position closer to home. And, but Sarah has 11-year-old twin sons, and they are playing in the Cal Ripken All-Stars State Championship Final today and this evening. And if they win this championship, then they get to go on to the New England Regionals. So, pretty exciting. And I said, "Well, I completely understood," and that we would have her come to the next meeting so that you can have an opportunity to listen to Sarah and have some questions for her if you do. So, moving on, I know you know Kevin Burke. He was our Assistant Vice Principal, Assistant Principal at the high school, but he's now moved into an interim high school principal position. And Kevin, I'm going to ask you to come up and just talk about your change in position.
So, I've been in East Hampton now for about eight years. Started off at White Brook and spent the last two and a half years at East Hampton as the Assistant Principal. Was happy to work with Dr. Perone and loved working at the high school, and was excited to get this opportunity to move on to become the interim principal. I look forward to it. Obviously, being at the high school for the past two and a half years and very familiar with it, very familiar with the students and how East Hampton works, and I'm looking very forward to moving forward and keeping our school at the status that it's at.
Any questions for Kevin? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
And I am very pleased that Kevin was willing to take on this position. As he's mentioned, he does know our high school. He worked very closely with Dr. Perone. He knows the professional development model that we have in place there and has participated in that actively. And so, I'm sure this is going to be a very good year for Kevin and for our high school. And next, I'd like to introduce Susan Welson. Sue is our new interim Assistant Principal at the high school. And Sue, would you like to come up and just say a few words? And Sue also was, it comes from our district, but I'll let her tell you about that.
Good evening, hi. I've worked in the district since 1999 as a teacher at White Brook as a 7th and 8th Grade Language Arts and Social Studies teacher. I also had the opportunity to work as the Social Studies Curriculum Team Leader and work on vertical teams within the district. So, I've had the opportunity to work with people from the elementary schools all the way through the high school. So, I think that's been a plus, to get to know so many people. I'm so looking forward and so excited to be at the high school. I've been there the last two weeks. I can't tell you how encouraged I am by how welcoming the people are. I've met a lot of students that have come into the building. It's a very active building throughout the day and evening, and teachers that have been coming in. I know a lot of the teachers and obviously a lot of the students there, and they've just made my entrance into the high school a very special one. I can't wait for September to support the students and the staff as much as I possibly can. East Hampton High has always had such a fine reputation amongst my peers and in the greater region, and I'm going to do everything I can to support the students and the staff and continue the great reputation. So, thank you very much for this opportunity, and Kevin and I have been working really well together, and I look forward to that administrative team, too. So, thank you.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
And, you know, I do like to promote from within if we have qualified candidates for our positions, because we do have so many teachers and staff who are so dedicated to the East Hampton Public Schools. And that's what I'm looking for, is that dedication to our students and to our district and to our goals. And so, I'm very pleased with the people that have been willing to step up to the plate and take on these positions as interim positions, you know, for this year. We were very close to the end of the school year when we learned about these changes, and so, this was, I think, a good situation for all of us, and I'm really looking forward to this year and working with this new administrative team. So, thank you all.
I just want to say, I just had to say that I think all phones have been abuzz with the news just hitting of Ms. Welson's new position, and the students are thrilled, so excited that she's going to be a part of East Hampton High School.
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah, they're really excited.
It's great to hear.
And she could not have been a more popular and well-loved teacher at White Brook. That would have been impossible. So, those kids are just thrilled that she's coming.
I agree with you, Deb. Yeah, I agree, too. And I think it's great, especially for both of you, because you know these high school kids already. I mean, you were in the middle school, so I think it's a win-win for all of us, so it's great to have.
Except for the poor students at White Brook that don't get to ever as a teacher.
Well, that's true.
That's the only downside.
Well, we're going to hire some more very, very good teachers. And it is wonderful that both Kevin and Sue know our students already. I think that's huge.
It's huge, yeah. So, we're very grateful. We're grateful for all of you.
And now, I'd like to have Patty Dougherty, our Athletic Director, come to the podium. Patty came to me earlier this year, and actually to Dr. Perone, to talk with us about considering increasing our athletic fees by a modest amount. And you have some, you had some information in your packet, and I'm going to ask Patty to explain, you know, why she's bringing this proposal forward and why she thinks it's important.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for letting me come to you with this. When I took over last year as the Athletic Director, I started on July 1st and was, you know, thrown in without, without a lot of time to really review the budget and look at what our costs were, where, you know, where our funds come from, and, you know, how our athletic department is funded. And I think the only thing that, the only budget conversation I had with Dr. Perone at the, you know, the first day I was there was, the budget's bleak. And so, you know, as with any new position, I sort of muddled through this year. The athletic department is one that, there's not necessarily a lot of people who know how it runs. So, you know, Dr. Perone and Kevin Burke were terrific in terms of, you know, helping me when they could, but there were a lot of phone calls to our previous Athletic Director because really, it is a department that, you know, there's nobody else to ask. So, and as you know, it's a stipend position, the Athletic Director position, and that, you know, even though it is a full-time position, it's not, you know, officially treated that way. So, this is in no way, what I'm proposing is in no way going to, you know, overwhelmingly change our budget. What I'm hoping for is a little bit of a cushion so we can come up with, so we can provide a little bit more in terms of support to our coaches, provide, be able to purchase some necessary equipment, perhaps help some of the teams that don't have as strong booster clubs as Seesawker in football with some of their uniform needs. You know, the community does a wonderful job of fundraising for athletics in East Hampton, but there's, there are, there are a number of needs that really should come from the school district. I think the big, you know, one of our major costs is transportation. That was increased, I believe, by 9% last year. Now, that was addressed almost 100% in the budget. My understanding of it is, after having a conversation with our previous business manager, but after talking again to Strong Buzz Company, the transportation increases will be 1.5% this year, next year, until the next bid. The current budget for contracted services gets us, which is around 12,000, I believe, gets us through the fall season. So, it's, you know, it's, and then we have the revolving account, as you know, which is, and that's where the fees come in, the user fees that that family's pay. So, what I'm looking to do is, oh, additionally, sorry, there was a, we have seen a 10% increase in free and reduced lunch in the last five years. Students that are on free lunch are given a waiver for their athletic fee. That waiver is not subsidized in any way, so it's not as if the athletic department sees that fund, that those funds come in. It's just given. And I agree, I think that, you know, we want, we want all families to be able to participate in the, in athletics, you know, as they want to, and certainly, we don't want to cost somebody out of an extracurricular activity. So, that said, if you look at what we currently charge and then a few examples of how much it actually costs to, per player, you can see we still subsidize these programs quite a bit for our families. So, hockey, who pay $300 per athlete, the actual cost per player is $768. Swimming, they pay $100, the actual cost is $486. Football, they pay $200 right now, their actual cost is $495. So, we're still subsidizing this for our families. If you go down the page a little bit, you can see some of the costs associated with home games versus away games. You know, there's a lot of these things are dependent on whether we have to have EMTs, police, site administrators, et cetera, but as you can see, it's not an inexpensive proposition. Couple things, too, that I didn't put in here that I just wanted to mention. We rolled out impact testing for all our athletes last year. That is about, I want to say it's a $750 annual fee that we pay for that. That comes out of the athletic budget. In the interest of having much better recordkeeping, we are introducing online registration this year. That is another additional cost. And then, we are also going to be working on having payment online. Hopefully, online payments will actually help a little bit in terms of collecting fees. So, we may see a little bump from that, but certainly, it's more the ease of reporting and following up and being able to do collections. So, as the state demands more of the athletic department compliance for impact testing, concussion training, you know, we go, I go often to the community to fulfill those needs, but there still is obviously a number of costs that we just need to meet. So, my recommendation is for now, and one thing I just want to say about the online registration and payment, one of my goals as the Athletic Director was to be able to come here and be able to, to bring our programming, to get some things under control, to bring our programming to a place where we can grow programs, maybe add some sports, that sometimes we lose students because we don't, to school choice, because of the limited number of sports we offer. So, my goal is really to improve our programming, look at, you know, maybe someday, having an athletic trainer that could be onsite for us. As long as I'm shuffling paper all day long without some of these online tools, that won't happen. So, we do need to, and I think we also need to figure out a way to, to come up with a really comprehensive way of addressing the overall budget. And I think that's something I want to spend more time on. But in the meantime, you know, without a little bit more income, we were so tight this year, and there's a number of ways that we had some extra income come in that I'm not confident is going to happen again. And I think that there were a number of, there was equipment that we had this year that we won't, that I'll have to reorder for next year. So, you know, what I'm recommending is that we, it's a $25 increase for individual seasons. So, if it was 100, it's 125. If it was 200, it's 225.
Oh, that wasn't clear at all. Okay. That's really comforting to know. I thought the increase was 125.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay.
No, so, I'm sorry. I see how that's worded now. Okay.
Okay.
And then, again, looking at the maximum fee per player and the family cap, it's sort of making sense. This would generate a little bit more income for us, and I think it keeps us pretty in line with other districts in our area, if you look at that. One thing to note in terms of income coming in for me is that one of the reasons I had sort of easily the hockey, swimming, and football... sort of easily the hockey, swimming, and football numbers is because those are our co-op programs, and when we work with other schools, we actually get the total cost of what it costs per player. Last year, football had, we had about 26 Hampshire students versus our 12 to 13 East Hampton students. That was a really disparate number, and it was unusual. So we got quite a bit of income out of that. I don't anticipate that again. It's going to go back to being more even.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
I know that we've discussed this, but just as a refresher for tonight's conversation, roughly the total annual athletic budget?
Um, let's, according to this, the budget including the fees that come in?
Right, your total, what's your total operating budget roughly?
Hundred and two is what it looks like from here.
And of that, how much, how much roughly is fees that you collect? Or for example, last year, do you remember roughly what you collected?
Hmm, actually, well, if you take a look, we have about, we have about 300, we take in about 300 user fees per year, give or take.
But they just vary depending on the sport, so, okay.
Right, so 30 to 35.
There's about 300 students or players, if we refer to them like per season?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, so you can have, you know, you can get an athletic fee from the same player for two different seasons.
Gotcha. And what was the projected cost of that online registration and the bill payment program that were?
Uh, the online registration is 795 annual, and the online payment is, does not cost anything. I would like us to, it's, if they use a credit card?
There's a capture fee?
There is. If they use a check, it's, their checking account, it's only 25 cents. I'm gonna, I, I propose that we absorb the 25 cents because it comes out to like, I don't know, 40 bucks or something. If, I, I would not say that for the credit card fee at this point.
I think it's usually like somewhere between one and a half to three percent or something.
It's, it's a little bit substantial. I mean, if everybody went that way, there would be hundreds of dollar cost to us.
Thank you. And I'm very relieved that you're not asking to increase it by $125.
No, and, you know.
It makes it sound a lot better.
Yeah, great. You know, if, if down the road, you know, the, the district wanted to figure out a way to subsidize more, I don't think that anybody would be upset if five years from now we were able to lower it back down or even less than that. But at this point in time, I know that the district does not have the budget to add to just the operating cost, and I think honestly, just get, again, I'm just looking for a little bit of a cushion, so I know that I have the funds to send the spring teams on buses to their games as opposed to car pulls. Because it, it, it's question, it was questionable this year. If, if not for the income from the co-ops, I, I think it would have been a cha, I think we would have not, we would have had trouble meeting that.
I think it's important to note that we haven't raised fees, you know, at least for the five years that I've been superintendent.
I think it's been longer, but Jeff Seelander and I couldn't exactly find the record of it.
It's been a good number of years.
I'm convinced it's been longer because I think my son was in eighth grade and he just graduated, he just finished his first year in college, so that was more than five years ago.
Yeah.
And we were paying the same thing then, so.
Patty, I'm just wondering, have you ever considered a model of charging each player fee, having it be a certain percentage of the total cost for that sport per player, as opposed to, you know, football's 200, but the actual cost is 495, and then swimming is charged 100, but their actual cost is 486, pretty close. So I was just wondering, did you ever consider, or have you considered, having it be like you, we, we pay, or they pay 60% of the cost, or 70, or whatever it is, or?
I think that's one way to look at it. That's not something we, I looked at doing this year. I mean, and again, I would love to, I would love to sit down, you know, with Dale, you know, and, and tear this whole thing apart and put it back together. That wasn't going to happen for me this year. Hopefully with some of the tools we have in place, I can have time to do something like that, and I would be happy to revisit this, you know, next year and look at that model.
Then I was thinking, parents too might be interested to know that, for instance, the fee that they're paying is just actually only whatever the percentage is, 60% of the actual cost to play, or whatever, 70, to have that appreciation that it's subsidized to a certain extent.
On the other side too, there are certain sports that you mentioned that have very active booster committees, so I'm sure that the cost of football is largely offset by fundraising done, but in that specific case, it, you know.
There are certain, yes, so for, you know, there, there are times when a booster club may be able to fully fund a uniform purchase. That would be, you know, some of the bigger ones. And then there are those that ask that we share some of that cost, and it's, and it can't, it would not happen unless we do. And we had a number of instances this year where we didn't have enough uniforms for players, which isn't really what we want.
Mayor Karen?
So you're basically asking to raise the fees by about $25 to just give you approximately a $5,000, $6,000 buffer just to make ends meet, just to scoot by where you know that you'll be protected and you can provide the services that you need for the year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was wondering about the family cap?
Yes.
So, we're looking at each athlete paying an extra 25 per sport, and then the per player cap went up $50, so maybe there's two sport athletes and then three sport athletes, and the family cap went up 125.
Right.
So that seemed to me like a much bigger jump than everybody else if.
Well, the, the family cap is based on five seasons, or five players playing.
Is that the family average?
So like, it used to be 500, so a hu, you know, sort of looking at $100 per season, per athlete per season. So the, the, adding the 25 to that made sense to me. The, the per player cap, the reason why I put that in is because generally speaking, the, the players who get there are, are football players who play three sports. So they would be looking at 225, 125, and then capping it there. So that would pretty much keep them the status quo in terms of what their expectation has been in the past.
And then the family cap?
So it's $25?
Because of five players, 25 each.
Right.
And you find that most families with?
We don't have a whole lot of families who get there because it's, you know, there, a lot of our families are not necessarily, you know, having.
More than one, two sports.
Right, right. Or, you know, I know a family that has five kids, so they paid their 500 bucks in the beginning of the year and just, that was, that was how they, they went for the year. But honestly, I haven't been fa, I don't think this year I had any family meet that, meet that standard.
Okay, so we need to vote on this. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to increase the 2015 athletic fees by $25 for all sports.
Oh.
Is that right?
Yeah, specify those player and family max too. Those would just go up 25 each, right?
Gotcha. And, so including an increase in the maximum fee player to 350 and the family cap to 625.
Is there a second?
And, and the cheerleading doesn't follow that though, does it?
Would, I don't think we can say 25 per sport. I just want to be clear for the, is cheerleading currently 25 and $50 for fall and winter?
Cheerleading is 100. I, I split this out this year because they do have different fees depending on. So it is a $25 increase.
Yeah, I'm just seeing the language for the motion.
Sure.
That's all.
So the cheerleading does work for that, with that language, right?
Lori has a new idea.
So as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you for, yeah, you put a lot into that. You could have just come and presented and asked for a $25 increase, though you did a lot of homework and a lot of presentations. Thanks.
I think it helps us all understand the challenges in our athletic program, and that's important for us all to be aware of.
Right.
Thank you Patty.
Okay, we have some minutes that we need to approve. First from the June 9th regular session meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from the regular session on June 9th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes from the regular session on June 23rd. Lori and I were absent.
All those in favor? Abstain?
Abstain.
And warrants and payroll.
Okay, and so I might have a question on one or two of these blanks, but I'll get it. Motion to approve the school payroll dated July 23rd, 2015, in the amount of $279,389.34.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated July 23rd, 2015, in the amount of $94,177.53.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated July 9th, 2015, in the amount of $326,802.29.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 30th, 2015, in the amount of $385,324.33.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And motion to approve the school payroll, let me make sure I didn't already read this one off. Do the 326, no, that one's already in here. There was just a double. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a school choice opening request for East Hampton High School, grade 11. Superintendent Fallsby, do you have something you want to share on that topic?
Kevin Burke, our principal's here, perhaps he'd like to come to the podium and just share some information on this request.
Hello again. So we had opened up a few spots earlier that was approved, and we're looking for one more grade 11 spot. We have had some, we've had some, we have one more student in there. There is a student who is currently enrolled, was a East Hampton resident, and moved and would like to school choice in, and that is the only student currently on the waiting list for 11th grade.
Any questions?
And you got room for them?
They're already registered.
Motion to approve the school choice opening request for the East Hampton High School, grade 11.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. We're happy to keep them.
Yes, we are.
Okay, we have a leave of absence request. Superintendent Fallsby, do you want to tell us about that?
Certainly. So I received a request from Jan Diubel, a teacher at the middle school, to have a leave of absence for one year. She is moving away from East Hampton and away from the state of Massachusetts with her husband, and she is requesting that we issue her a leave of absence so that if they discover, they decide that they don't want to live in Pennsylvania, and, and I included the email here, and want to come back to the state of Massachusetts that her job would still be open. And when I spoke with Jan, I told her that I had some concerns about that, that when we've issued leaves of absence in the past, it's to faculty members who have assured us that they planned to return to their position. And in their absence, they were seeking to improve their skills and to bring some other things back to their students when they returned after the year's leave of absence. In this case, it, it appears that there isn't that strong commitment to return to our, our school district. There's a possibility, but not the strong commitment. And at this point in the school year, being this late in the school year, or actually this early in the next school year, it's very difficult for us to find a one-year appointment, a person who's willing to take a one-year appointment for a long-term substitute position. Earlier in the year, that might not have been quite as much of a problem. So, you know, I, I have to support what I believe is in the best interests of our students, and we will have a fair, a far better chance of being able to hire a highly qualified teacher for this school year, this 2015, 2016 school year, if we can hire a permanent replacement as opposed to a substitute or a long-term appointment. So I, she did ask that I bring this forward to you, and I'm bringing it forward to you this evening, but I did want to share the concerns that I shared with Ms. Diubel when she and I spoke.
Do you want to have any questions?
I, I completely support Superintendent Fallsby's decision and recommendations on this. I think it's not, yeah, doesn't need to be repeated.
Okay, are we ready to take a vote? Do we have a motion?
So I make a motion to not accept the one-year leave of absence for Jan Diubel.
Not approve.
Deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Although I wish her and her family good luck, I mean.
And we thank her for her year, wonderful years of service.
Yes, and I just want to make sure that everyone understands that it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with her qualities as a teacher. She's been a wonderful teacher in our district and at our middle school, and provided a rich education for our students. It is, again, simply about the students who will be in our schools during this coming school year, and what's in their best interest.
Will miss her.
You're talking about popular with the students too, so.
Yes.
Yes, very much so.
We hope someday maybe she'll come back. Okay, we have a food service contract to discuss.
Yes, and my apologies that this is coming to you, so it was so little notice, as did the leave of absence request, but I received these today, the, the final documents for these. So this is a price proposal for the East Hampton Public Schools Food Service Program, Chartwell's. We did go out to a, a bid process, and the only bid that came in was from Chartwell's. I personally have been very happy with the Chartwell's food service program. If you look at page 17, you can see what their proposal is, that it is a guarantee for a break even. And they've, they've been excellent at working with us in terms of keeping the cost down and the quality of.
Page seven.
Seven, oh, sorry. Thank you. Anyway, yeah, it looks like 17. When I looked at it quickly, seven, it's only seven. And so if you approve this proposal this evening, then they will drop a contract. The contract has to be approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and then it will go into place in our district. So we, I'm asking you for approval of, of their price proposal.
Nancy, can I ask, I just read an article this week, I can't remember if it was in the local paper or if it was in the Boston Globe, but where the, the formula for free and reduced lunch is being changed. Does that take it into account and reflect it here?
Uh, no, because I don't believe that it's actually been put into place yet. I don't know if you, I don't think it has. My, to my knowledge, I haven't received any definitive information on it being put into place, but this is something they're considering doing. So we don't have any information on it yet, nor did Chartwell's.
Okay.
I have one question. There's an I-
There's an item, a line item for food plans, which I'm familiar with that organization, but I, to my knowledge, we hadn't had it in the district previously. Are we contracting to have them come in and work?
We've talked about that, we've talked about that. The wellness committee is very interested in bringing that program into our district, and it's been very successful in, in other districts, so I believe that that's why that was put in, because Andrew Stratton, our food service director, is a member of our wellness committee, and so.
I know he was a big advocate for that program.
Yeah, so I think it was, he probably was involved in this, obviously, and, and requested that that be put in, in the hope that we can put that into our school lunch program, food service program.
You don't have any details on as to what here, so I guess we'll talk about that at some other point.
Yes, I don't.
Probably elementary level.
You know, it may be bigger than that. I know we've talked about middle school, possibly too, so, but that's, again, in its infancy stages, so we can have another presentation on that.
Okay. Are we voting on this tonight, or is this just?
Yes, yes.
And Dale feels good about this as well?
Yes, he does. Yes, I spoke with Dale about the athletic fee increase. She felt that that was entirely appropriate, and I also spoke with her about this, and she's in agreement that this is a, a good model for us, a good, good proposal.
I'm grateful to have.
You want Dale to speak about this?
I guess the only thing that I would say is there's been a lot of discussion among the districts at Northern Franklin County about food service programs not being able to cover their own expenses.
Yeah.
And that this is a guaranteed break even proposal, I think makes it quite attractive.
Actually, that was, thank you, that was the one question I was going to ask, because if you look on page seven where we were, you know, you see the loss, and then you see underneath it the break even. So that was exactly what I was going to ask, so that means exactly what it says.
It is, they'll reduce their fee in the event that they need to reduce expenses to break even, is my understanding. It's attractive.
And also, you did mention it was the only proposal we received.
Yes, it was, as a matter of fact. And, you know, as I said, we've been just very happy, very pleased with the food service program, and Andrew Stratton's worked with us in, in the district.
He's come to see us quite a few times, he's very excited about this program.
Yes, yeah, so he's been wonderful with the farm-to-school programs and bringing healthy foods into our schools, and, you know, encouraging our students to eat healthy foods, and, and new and different foods, so.
Changes.
Yeah, yeah, we've been very pleased.
Motion, motion to accept the food service contract request?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.